6:02 PM on January 11, 2024, and this is the time and place. Can you not hear me?
No, I think we can hear you.
She said no.
Oh, you can't, the microphones are on. So you would like the volume turned up?
Luke, would you mind turning up the volume on the mics just a little bit, please?
That better? Oh, I'll start again. It is now 6:03 PM, January 11, 2024, and this is the time and place of the Ada County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We extend a welcome to all those who are here in person, as well as to any who may be joining us online via WebEx. We'll begin with a roll call of the commissioners. First, we will excuse Commissioners Colson, Whitman, and Wickstrom, who are not able to join us this evening. Commissioner Exton.
Here.
Commissioner Retslaff.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
And I'm Commissioner Birch, and I'll be conducting the meeting this evening. We've had a request from staff to change the agenda slightly, and so the first item that needs attention relates to the election of officers to this body. And so, Mr. Lutson, if you could help us with that, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, staff is requesting that you, that the commission elect on an interim basis for one month until the February P&amp;Z hearing, the current chair and vice chair to serve in their existing roles until we can have all commissioners present for a formal election, again, in February, so next month. So that's the request from staff. We probably need a commissioner to try to paraphrase that motion and get it before you, though. So let me know if you need any help.
Commissioner Scott, please.
I motion that we keep the chair and vice chair, Commissioner Birch's chair, Commissioner Exton as vice chair, at an interim basis until the February planning and zoning, when we can have the full planning and zoning board present for elections.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Commissioner Retslaff has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is no one opposed, so it passes. The first item on the, well, we're going to rearrange the agenda somewhat as well. But the first item on the agenda is item number 202302047-S-FP-PR. That's Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And the applicant has requested that this matter be tabled until the meeting on February 15, 2024. So I'm looking for a motion to table this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Retslaff.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that case number 202302047-S-FP-PR be tabled to February 15, 2024.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Exton has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I say aye, so all have approved. Next, we would like to ask Ms. Branding of staff to address another item that has been requested to be tabled.
Chairman Commissioners, project 202302208, a preliminary plat floodplain application in private road. They have, the applicant has requested to table this application to February 15th to continue working with ACHD on some of their site-specific conditions of approval.
Thank you, Ms. Branding. Does anybody have any questions about that request? All right, looking for a motion to table this item, then.
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
I move to table project 202302208-S-FP-PR to the February 15, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Exton. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scott has seconded. Is there any reason for discussion here? Don't think so. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And no one has opposed, so, and I say aye as well, so we all agree. And then, the last agenda change we're going to make is we're going to go ahead, the commissioner's approval to bring up the Clark Wardle item here that's been requested because there is no opposition that has been expressed to it, so we believe it can be handled very quickly. The commissioners in agreement to make that change to the agenda?
Yeah.
Everyone has said yes. So, Mr. Lutson, if you could go ahead and make that presentation.
Well, Commissioners, we have another IT issue. Apparently not enough disk space to open the presentation. Have you seen this before? You might?
Uh, no.
Luke's got the solution.
I don't, PowerPoint should be that large enough to do.
Luke's on his way, so. There's not enough disk space to open the presentation. We have to free up some disk space. For a guy who's not techie, I don't exactly know what that means, but I think our computer's a little full, had too much, too big of a dinner or something, but we'll give it just a second and we'll have it up and running for you, so. Yes. Um, and just use the laptop to present?
Yeah.
Sure, we can. Yeah, okay. All right, well, we'll give that a try. Okay, I think I can just share it, because it's through Michaela right now, so. All right, thank you, Chairman Commissioners. I think we just got all of the technology issues out of the way for the year, so there won't be any more. So before you is a zone change development agreement, variance, and a property boundary adjustment. The applicant is Clark Wardle LLP. It consists of two properties totaling 5.02 acres. The smaller property is zoned estate residential and contains .98 acres. It is a platted lot within Wade subdivision. And the larger property is a zoned rural preservation parcel and contains 4.04 acres. As you can see here, it's surrounded by rural residents to the west, both the subject, one of the subject properties, as well as the one to the south, and then Idaho public land to the northeast and west. If you can follow my, oh, sorry, follow my cursor here. This small section of the roadway is actually public land, so is this arm here, and then all of this back here is Idaho Department of Public Land. And that'll be important later when we talk about the variance and some of the challenges associated with the property. It's also uniquely, one of the properties is in Boise's area of city impact, and the other one is outside of the area of city impact. And so, it's, the one outside is sort of the Ada County's Conference of Plan, and the one inside is sort of the Boise's Conference of Plan. I'll note later, as I talk about agency comments, that we've reviewed both conference of plans in evaluating the requested zone change and other applications associated with the project. So here is a schematic of the proposed property line adjustment. Tried to label things as best I can. Sorry, I'm looking at like three different screens, so it's a little disorienting for me if I get lost. You can see in the top of the diagram here, the adjusted property line, so in the event that the project is approved, and all of this, just to make you aware, is final approval by the board. Typically, this group doesn't make any decisions on variances or development agreements, but because all of this is packaged up at one, as one, we are just forwarding everything as a recommendation to the board, their final decision. So, again, the adjusted property line there, and that would actually take one of the existing accessory structures on the larger piece and add it to the smaller piece that has the single-family dwelling today. And then we would have larger parcel B where the requested zone from RP to RR is being made, and there would be two existing accessory structures on that property. The intent of the project is to eventually build a new single-family home on the larger property, which is, as I mentioned, a little over four acres in size. Parcel A is zoned R1, as mentioned before, and parcel B is zoned RP to RR, or will be zoned RR if approved. And so, we would end up with a split-zone property. Usually, we don't encourage that, but there's nothing in our code that prohibits it. And in the name of trying to get these structures on the right property with the single-family home, it's something that staff is supportive of. In terms of the history of the property, sorry, one second here. It was acquired by the applicant in 1991, and they entered into an agreement, we've seen a lot of these lately, where people enter into real estate contracts and then eventually record a deed. So it was officially acquired in 1991, however, they entered into the agreement to purchase in 1982. And that's important for amnesty provisions within the code, because 1985, January 1, is usually the cutoff for allowing some non-conforming properties to be developed. And so, that date is kind of important in this situation. There was a property status report, we now call them property information reports, filed in 1995 to figure out if the property was eligible for development. And because of the recording date of the deed of 1991, unfortunately, it was not, because in 1989, the RP district minimum lot size was changed to 40 acres. So, as a result of the recording of, the timing of the recording of the deed and the change to our RP district, it's now a non-conforming property, which is why they're before you with a request to rezone to get a variance ultimately from the board and to do this property boundary adjustment. Today, the property is surrounded on the northeast and south by land owned by the state of Idaho, as I mentioned earlier, and to the west is the smaller parcel owned by the applicant, as well as another substandard parcel in the RP district that's 7.75 acres in size and already occupied by a single-family dwelling. The reason that's important to largely the variance request is there really is an opportunity for this property to go out and pick up more land and achieve the RP requirement. Also, based on the fact that it's outside of the Boise area of city impact, we don't allow a zoning district typically below the RR district, which is what they are requesting. That's the most intense zone that they can get, for lack of a better way to describe it. And so, they need the variance to get from the required 10 acres of the RR down to ultimately the 4 acres that they'll end up with. So that's the purpose of that, that variance. Agency comments were pretty standard. Ada County Building Official is going to require permits for any new structures. This is in our urban and wildland interface area, so they are going to be subject to making sure it's a fire-safe building and maintaining landscaping and things like that. Boise Public Works noted that this larger piece is outside of their city limits and will not be eligible for sewer until it's annexed in. Typically, we don't encourage properties to annex if they're not inside an area of city impact. So again, we're kind of in this interesting situation where they're going to have to utilize well and septic, which on a four-acre property isn't a problem typically. But that's just a comment from Boise Public Works. The Health District will review the sewage disposal system, as is typical for any property needing to make use of a septic. Our community and regional planning team, as I mentioned before, found, specifically, they focused on the larger parcel for the zone change, because that's where the majority of the comp plan comes into place. The other items really aren't subject to conference of plans in terms of property boundary adjustments, variances, and development agreements. But they did find that the request to rezone the larger parcel from RP to RR is ultimately in compliance with our conference of plan. Our county surveyor is going to have some minor changes needed to the record of survey prior to recording, which, those are typically staff-level administrative applications, and so no problem incorporating those after the ultimate approval by the board, if that's what happens. And then finally, the Whitney Fire Department, which is managed by Boise Fire, had no objections to the proposal. They do request that the larger parcel be annexed into their district so that they can essentially be paid for serving it, but they would serve it anyways, but it will formally be in their district. And that is something that we like to see with the RR zoning as well, is that it's inside of a fire district. In terms of public comments, we received two from neighboring property owners, both in support of the applicant's request to change the zoning and go through the other applications. In terms of the findings for the project, again, all this is contained in your staff report and findings, and in greater detail explained as to why we found it to be in compliance, but I'm happy to ask, answer questions to those effects later. But again, complies with both the Boise and the Ada County Conference of Plan, complies with the code for property boundary adjustments, zoning ordinance map amendments, development agreements, and variances. For the variance, again, not normally your purview, but these are the three findings that we have to make. The variance shall not grant a rider special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. The variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. There's a pretty detailed section in the findings that speak about why we found that to be in compliance. In general, though, we have seen similar requests like this in the RR district, or even rezoning the RP properties to RR districts and incorporating a variance. So for that reason, we don't believe it's a special rider privilege. We do believe that the property has some undue hardship associated with the fact that it's surrounded by all public land and two properties that really can't be reduced in size to make up the difference for the requested RR or even the RP zone. So for those reasons, we do believe there's an undue hardship associated or characters, due to the characteristics of the site. And then finally, the variance shall not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. Based on the review of agency comments earlier in the presentation, I think that finding is pretty easily made. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lutson. Are there any questions of the staff, of the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll thank you, and we will invite the applicant to come forward. I have down on my sheet Preston Rutter.
We're gonna have you, I think maybe stand over, I think we can have you here, actually. Sorry.
Signal next slide. All right, let me know when you're ready, Leon.
We'll get it back from Preston. Okay. Let me get that pulled up real quick.
No, that's just fine.
Keep grabbing the mouse, thinking it's actually gonna help. All right.
Okay, just with the arrows. Perfect. Preston Rutter, name for the record, 251 East Front Street, Boise, Idaho, 83701. Thank you, Leon, and Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight. The staff report and presentation captures much of what I wanted to cover. I will just add some more context and details in case that helps explain why we're here and why we think this gets punched through. Sharon, who I represent, Sharon Anglesby, was unable to be here today. And as you'll hear in my presentation, true to her character and fashion, she was putting a snowplow blade on her four-wheeler and had a bad slip and fall, and she's watching this from her home. She wanted to be here to show her support of this application and be able to hear any comment, or take any questions that you might have for her. Given her absence, if there would be questions for her, I'd just ask that she be given that opportunity at some point. And as Leon captured here, this has an interesting history. As you can see here, this is the horse pasture. I'll refer to it as parcel B, the four-acre. We're talking all the same thing. This was created, kind of an anomaly. It was a spinoff of a larger RP parcel, and it's still zoned RP. What's fascinating about this, it was, it had an ag restriction imposed on it. So, it's meant to have agricultural uses and activities on it, but it's So it's meant to have agricultural uses and activities on it, but it's a 10% of the size of what an RP parcel should be. So it's kind of in this limbo, no man's land. And we're here ultimately to get it eligible for a building permit. I say permit singular because that's all Sharon really wants here. It's been fascinating how those who, at the neighborhood meeting, and people walking by, seeing the public notice sign, they've come up to her in concern, saying, what kind of subdivisions can be put in here? And Sharon makes it unmistakably clear, I'm putting one home in here, that's all I want. And most of the time, people back off and say, oh, okay, that works for us. So just want to make it clear, if she were here, she would be emphasizing that point. The background here, as Leon hit on, they, Sharon and her husband moved there in 1982 on the one-acre piece to the left, and about 10 years later, they bought this four-acre parcel. They run horses, they're animal-loving people, and they were so thrilled to get this four-acre parcel. As time goes on, though, it gets very taxing, and Sharon and her husbands slowed down quite a bit and had to come to the county a few times, seeing, maybe we can offload this four-acre parcel. They were dissuaded each time, just because of the RP designation, the strange creation of this four-acre parcel. And her husband sadly passed away in 2006, and Sharon, with her grid, has been managing this horse pasture all this time, and she's just worn out, and she realizes this chapter in her life needs to come to a close. So that's kind of the impetus of why we got here. And this started back in 2022, believe it or not. It's been a long time coming. I've had a lot of good help from staff to thread this needle, and it's a very narrow needle we had to find. It took a lot of time to find how this could work. So the rezone, just want to hit on a few main points here. We are trying to get this property more aligned with the county's comprehensive plan. Right now, we're an RP, it's kind of a misfit out there. We're trying to get it more aligned and in compliance, and that's exactly what this would accomplish. We have designated as rural residential in your comprehensive plan, and RR, you know, fits right into that. It hits on other major goals in the comprehensive plan. As Leon noted, it's a fascinating graphic that Sharon owns two properties. One is within Boise's area, city of impact. This four-acre one is not. And we fall outside of the area of city of impact, and as goal 2.3 states, we want to, the county wants to provide limited residential development. This is the perfect textbook case for that. And as Leon hit on, made a point, Idaho Fish and Game surrounds her on three sides, and there's lots of walkers, lot of joggers, people who walk their dogs. And so she has it fenced off and is more than willing to continue to comply. In fact, she helps mow the tall weeds and grasses to keep fire risks down, just as a courtesy to Fish and Game. She's had that relationship ongoing for some time. We are stuck in that limbo. If we are given a recommended approval tonight, and ultimately an approval, we can cut this Gordian knot that she's stumbled into. She didn't realize that when she bought it. So she can't put a residence on it, she can't really get it to the full RP ag uses. And as Leon noted, we have this conundrum where we can't go down to R1 at all. We're blocked off at every turn. So we're literally left with just RR as the only available zone. And that goes to my point earlier, this is a needle we're trying to thread, it's a very narrow one. As you know, RR's minimum size is 10 acres, we're at 4.04, so about 40%. And interestingly, if this were to be granted, which we believe it should, the nonconformity of this parcel, the misfit nature, actually kind of goes away a lot. And now we're inching that much closer to aligning with an RR zone. Right now, there's just a huge gap being zoned RP. As Leon hit on earlier, we have no real special privilege being granted if this variance is afforded to us. The right we're seeking is just to build a residence, and that's what anyone in an RR zone can do as a matter of right. And the hardship is unique to the characteristic of the site. You don't always see that on a variance. A lot of times, it's for a convenience. This is a case that I think fits squarely and is in all fours for a variance request. And as the agency comments, they speak for themselves, there's no real concern here as it pertains to health, safety, or welfare. The PBA or property boundary adjustment, I just want to bring this to your attention. That is contingent on the outcome of this application. So as you know, we're asking for a rezone of the variance if those are approved. Sharon has already submitted and worked through staff on this PBA, and you can see this little jog here in the yellow line. That's what she hopefully would retain within her property. And it's not just for access to this carport there. Her late husband actually built it with his bare hands, and then put a carport lean to on the side. She has the home video of them transferring it on a forklift over there, and it's just a lot of sentimental reasons. And so I just want to bring some context to why we're here tonight. We have a, you know, clean staff approval across the board for our request here, and with that, I'll stand for any questions that this body may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rutter. Any questions of the commissioners for the applicant? Looks like no. Before you sit down, I've got to say, I've seen a lot of applications. The materials that you submitted with your letter of October 10th, 2023, to Corey Branding was one of the clearest, most professional, well-written documents I have ever seen in connection with one of these. And so thank you very much for doing such a fine job of that.
Thank you for the high compliment. I work with a wonderful team. Thank you.
So we have online, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. I had to retrieve the computer. John Mooney Jr. Let me know when he is ready.
My one technological save of the year.
Mr. Mooney, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
You have three minutes to give your presentation. If you would start with your name and address, please.
Thanks, Commissioners, and sorry for the wait there. John Mooney Jr., 7153 East Highland Valley Road. I'm happy to hear that Sharon was well represented by Preston and Clark Wardle. That was a great compliment. Thank you for that. I live due west of Sharon, the applicant, in my, on my R1 parcel in the Wade subdivision. And as you saw in your agenda materials, I'm in support of the application. My letter's Exhibit 23, so I'm not going to belabor my written testimony. But I do want to bring up one more background thing that Preston didn't mention, nor Leon mentioned as well. Since the property is split by the Boise area city impact and the county, when I bought our parcel in 2017, Sharon was in contract with and in conversation with a developer that developed the Finisterra neighborhood, which is due south and slightly west of this application. And that was developed in the city of Boise at eight dwelling units per acre, R1C. And that was, it's called Finisterra. And he was proposing to buy Sharon's RP parcel, the four-acre parcel that you're considering tonight, in addition to her R1 parcel, combine it all into five acres, and find a way to basically get adjacency to Boise City and then rezone within the city, and then build Finisterra 2 at eight dwelling units per acre. So on that five acres, we're talking obviously 40 more homes. And obviously, Sharon ended up getting out of that arrangement with the developer, but that's always been a threat, that a developer could go down that road. So that's just another piece of background that if a developer was willing to, you know, take into account the ACI boundary, then it would completely destroy the intent of the comp plan, which is to taper residential density, especially into the foothills, and especially right next to the Boise River Wildlife Management Area, which is a low-elevation winter game refuge for the Angullets that winter up there, as you guys know. So in summary, I know you've heard a great, great staff report, and Preston's, and I'm just in support of this, and reemphasizing the intent is for one home, it keeps low residential density, and avoids any future problems that a developer might cause by buying both parcels and getting them zoned into the city at a higher density. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mooney. Any questions for Mr. Mooney? Mr. Mooney, thank you very much. Is there anyone present in the room that would like to speak to this project? Seeing none, and no one else online, correct?
There's no one else for this item on line.
Okay. And Mr. Rutter, you'd be welcome to come back up if you so desire, but otherwise, you can just say you're good.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Chairman and I, not to interrupt you, I will add both presentations and exhibits to the record, which will be forwarded to the board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. So this closes the public testimony portion of the meeting. We're now ready to have a motion, and then discussion, and then vote on this item. So we're looking for a motion, one way or the other, with respect to this particular application.
Chairman Burge.
Commissioner Exton.
Based upon the findings affecting conclusions of law contained here and in the testimony from the public hearing, I move to recommend approval of Project 202302300 ZCDAVPBA.
Thank you, Mr. Exton.
Board of County Commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Exton. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Commissioner Scott has seconded. Commissioner Exton, would you like to speak in favor of your motion?
Sure. You know, I do think as staff and the applicant have demonstrated, this is a very unique situation, you know, with, again, the parcel being so small, where it's definitely very out of conformity. And I think this definitely brings it much more into that line of being, you know, inconformity. And there's, it's only one house, the impact on that isn't, you know, very intense on the area at all. And I feel very confident with this because the Whitney Fire District, one of the conditions of approval for this project is that it is formally moved into the Whitney Fire District as well, so meets all those.
Thank you, Commissioner Exton. Is there any further discussion with respect to this matter? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion that's been made, please say aye.
Aye.
I also say aye, and there is no one opposed. Thank you very much, it has been approved. Before we get to the main event, I noticed that I have two people listed here, Ray Arana and Tim Gibson, that had been present in connection with the matter that has been tabled. Are either of those individuals still here? Okay, looks like they were aware that it has been. So just by way of order, what will happen is that the applicant's going to be given 15 minutes to make their presentation, and I'm going to ask, if we can, staff to do the timing. Prior to that, staff will actually give their report, then the applicant will have 15 minutes. Following the applicant's presentation, members of the public will each have three minutes to give testimony. And so we're going to be pretty rigid because of the number of people here and because of the potential weather situation outside. Following that, we'll see if staff has anything further to add. Following that, then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, after which the public testimony will be closed, and we'll go through the same process that we just did with the motion and consideration, and then vote. So the next item on the agenda is Item 202302320-CU-MSP. Dave Roach, and we will turn the time over to Ms. Branding from staff for the staff report.
Thank you. Chairman, Commissioners, Project 202302320CU-MSP, conditional use in master site plan per wedding venue. The property is located at 415 West Lake Hazel Road and consists of 5.34 acres in the rural urban transition district. Please note that the aerial included in the staff report does not show the recent home built on the property to the east, which is shown in this aerial on the screen. The proposal includes three phases. The first would be outdoor-only events with conversion of space in the existing dwelling for use for bridal parties. The second phase would include an 1,800-square-foot pavilion structure, and the third phase would include a 5,500-square-foot barn. If this is to be approved, you will need to add a condition of approval for the phasing plan. The applicant has proposed that Phase 3 would be completed within five years. Within the proposal, the applicant stated that events would take place Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. with tours of the venue Monday through Thursday. There are 60 parking spaces proposed, with two to be required as ADA. The event area is largely located in the center of the property, with some ceremony space located further south, and the future barn area in the southwest corner. Access to the site is limited based on the flaglot shape of the property. As conditioned, the driveway is needed to be widened to 20 feet with a turnaround provided. Currently, the driveway is approximately 15 feet wide and lined on the east with mature trees. A portion of the existing driveway is within an easement on the property to the west, and the property to the east has an easement on the driveway area of this property. To meet this 20-foot requirement of driveway widening, all of those existing mature trees would need to be removed. The existing vegetation of this site supports a waiver of majority of the perimeter landscaping. However, conditions of approval have been included to require landscaping plans along the northern boundary of the parking area and that southern property line prior to construction of Phase 3. And due to the widening requirement of the driveway, the commission would also need to grant a waiver for perimeter landscaping along that driveway area. Twelve neighbors submitted comments in opposition to this application, with a variety of concerns that are listed here on the screen for you and were included in the staff report. Some of these include loss of privacy, safety concerns, increase in noise and traffic, disruption to irrigation, risk to livestock, and more. Where it was applicable, based on agency comments and the Ada County Code requirements, conditions of approval have been included to address neighbor concerns. Some of these key conditions include the 20-foot driveway with turnaround, approval of plans from CUNIFIRE or the Idaho State Fire Marshal, submitting a lighting plan, landscaping plans where applicable, that the applicant shall comply with the county noise ordinance, irrigation facilities must remain unobstructed, 150 guests maximum, and events Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The commission could strike the 20-foot condition as it is covered within that fire approval condition, and that would allow for the applicant to be able to work with the fire authority directly to see if there's any possible alternative design options. So staff concludes that with the granting of the waiver to the perimeter landscaping along that driveway area, the application will comply with the Ada County Code and recommends approval of the conditional use in master site plan, and I'll stand for any questions. And it is noted, if you do approve, that condition is needed for a phasing plan.
Thank you, Ms. Branding. Are there any questions of the commissioners for staff?
I have a question.
Mr. Scott.
Can you explain the striking part a little bit more? I'm trying to understand if we strike that from the conditions of approval, how, what would it look like going forward? Is it just suddenly, we just say, hey, they can go ahead and do what they want with that road, or, and just have future approval from fire, and whatever happens, happens? I'm just trying to understand that a little bit.
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner Scott, so if you look at the conditions of approval, condition number seven states that the applicant shall receive written approval from CUNIFIRE District or the Idaho State Fire from CUNIFIRE District or the Idaho State Fire Marshal for the use, including but not limited to the access road, parking, turnaround, fire flow, and shall comply with all fire authority requirements. So the reason the twenty-foot-wide driveway was included was a comment from the Idaho State Fire Marshal. If you were to strike the blank condition that requires the twenty-foot-wide, the fire authority still needs to approve that access road. It would just allow them to see if there's any alternatives, nineteen feet, et cetera.
All that to allow for the keeping of those mature trees.
That's kind of the concern, is what I was thinking.
So that's why we're suggesting, because the requirement ultimately at twenty feet is coming from the fire authority, we should allow the fire authority to see if they would approve an alternative. There's not a section of our code that requires a twenty-foot driveway entrance there. It's all coming from the fire department. So really want to give that to the authority requiring the twenty feet to see if they have an alternative design process that they could work through.
Excuse me, any other questions for staff? Ms. Branding, thank you very much. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name and address, and thereafter you'll be on the clock.
My name is Dave Roach. The address is 415 West Lake Hazel Road, Meridian, 83642. And what brings us here today was my wife and I, we bought that property in May of 2019. Twenty, no, it was 2020. And we, on purpose, purchased that property because we wanted to open an event center, wedding venue. And we found out when we bought it that it was RUT. And so we started doing some work on the property, trying to get it ready. And then we had a couple of, we had two neighborhood meetings. And we hear the concerns from our neighbors. We've talked to them, we've read their letters, we hear them. So what I'm doing here is trying to gather all the information that we need from the commission, from the county, so that we can address those, make adjustments, so that we can move forward and get this project approved.
Anything else?
Thanks for your time for helping us go through this project. And we're looking forward to, you know, something positive, so.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Exton.
I was wondering if you've, you know, you mentioned that you've read all the letters and stuff from the neighbors in opposition. Do you have any plans as of right now on how you are going to address some of those concerns? You know, obviously with this use, some of the concerns will very likely happen regardless. You know, when there is a wedding, there will be more noise. There will be increased traffic, things like that. But you know, with the fencing and things, you know, some of those other concerns that are definitely more in your ability to control, have you thought of, you know, any tactics or solutions to their compromises?
Yeah, we don't want to be the bad neighbor, but I understand to a point their concerns about having multiple people on the property. We had a family wedding on our property last August. And on purpose, I was walking around the fencing to see if I could hear stuff that was leaving our property and going to other properties and our neighbors. And I was surprised that even when the DJ was playing, that I couldn't hear hardly the music from our gate and the fencing. And so I was encouraged by that. And, you know, we're going to do everything that we can. We'll have, you know, policies and procedures, you know, that whoever rents that property, they're going, you know, they're going to have to sign that. And, you know, I don't want to be at odds with the neighbors. So we will do everything in our power. Some comments have been kind of crazy, but some are legitimate, and we understand that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Thank you.
We will now turn time over to the members of the public again. And I've got a list, so I'll call people. And when you come up, please state your name and address. First I have on the list is George Hutton Howe.
Commissioners, George Hutton Howe, 447 West Lake Hazel Road. Our property is directly north of the event, proposed event venue property, and borders their driveway. So we have, there's an easement we've provided for access to that property along the driveway. And we have a pasture fence that runs the entire length of that driveway. I'm one of the few people, I suppose, or I guess there's more now, who are able to work from home occasionally. I'm one of the lucky few. So I use my backyard as my office when the weather permits. Unfortunately, that time period is also going to be during wedding events. So the increased traffic on the road next to our driveway will, one, noise provide a distraction for me while I'm working. I could go inside, but it's nice to work outside occasionally. And the dust from the road would also create an issue. Our drive, or the back of our house and our backyard is visible for the entire length of the driveway. So that's where, as Corrine said, we had privacy concerns. To combat that loss of privacy, we would have to change our fence around our backyard to make it a solid fence, which would take away our view of our property and allow us to check on our animals as easily as possible. Or we would have to plant more trees, which we are considering doing anyway to help combat the noise and the dust levels. Our other concern is fire access. With the fifteen-foot-wide driveway, only a single car fits. If there is, God forbid, a fire on the property, there's going to be masses of traffic coming in and out, and fire access would be blocked because there isn't enough room. As per my letter, I also have concerns about somebody going off of that driveway and crashing into our fence, letting out our animals. For these reasons, I urge and hope that you will not approve this venue. Any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hutton Howe? Mr. Hutton Howe, I've got a couple of questions for you. How long have you owned your property?
We moved in in 2004, yes, 2004.
Okay. And the road, the private road, who is responsible for maintenance of the private road?
Maintenance of the private road is allowed by the Roaches. They can maintain the road and cut back any vegetation that's impacting on the road. We did have, there were trees along the west side of that driveway that when we first met Dave and Cheryl, we let them know that we didn't care what happened to those trees. Later, they did remove them.
What is the surface of the road?
Surface of the road is a sand and gravel mix. It's a road mix.
How often is that replaced?
As far as I know, other than when Dave and Cheryl were preparing the area for Ben's wedding, his son's wedding, there hasn't been any maintenance as far as replacing that surface.
I mean, oftentimes you have the gravel gets thrown out onto the side, and so they have to bring in more gravel for it. And I guess that was my question. And so they just basically grade it periodically to keep it from having ruts in the road? Is that correct?
Yes, that's what the previous owner, Eric X-line, did. I think he had a little compact tractor that he used to...
Box blade or something. So you had mentioned that, who maintains it? Who pays for the maintenance? If it's a private road, are the residents sharing the cost of whatever it does cost to have that maintained? Or is the municipality paying for it?
It's residents only. The municipality has nothing to do with it.
Okay, so the residents are paying the company that's maintaining the road to do that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Hutton Howe. Appreciate your time. Star Jordan.
That's my wife. She would like me to hand you these.
And you should hand that to Ms. Branding, who can then enter it into the record.
Yeah, we want to provide you a copy and staff as well. How many copies do we have?
We have seven in total.
Oh, okay.
Four right there.
Okay, so we'd want to give each commissioner one, and then we'll need a copy at the end of the hearing to enter into the record.
Right.
And you may want to give the gentleman a chance to tell you what that is, because we don't really know what the exhibit is.
Chairman, I believe this is for the next person who's speaking.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
So is there a Star Jordan in the room?
She can not hear you at all the time, so...
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan, if you can give your name and address.
I'm hearing impaired, so if you could please speak up, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Name and address.
My name is Star Jordan. I live at 447 West Lake Hazel Road, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. How is it possible to convey to you how a wedding venue will permanently and severely impact my privacy, quality of life, safety, mental health, physical health, property, the safety of my livestock and pets, and the ability to live a quiet, peaceful, retired life? There are so many concerns and issues I would like to address, but there is not enough time to explain the impact and financial cost of each of those subjects. My life is being threatened by people who have only been in our neighborhood for three years. They have never made an effort to become part of the decades-old community. This is a huge injustice to those of us who have lived here for twenty, thirty, forty years. They have never attempted to communicate or becomes friends with any of us. We are a tight-knit community, peaceful and well-established community. The fact that the applicant state they are interested in bringing benefits to the community by providing a much-needed service completely ignores what they are doing to our neighborhood community. This shows just how disconnected they are from the community of neighbors who actually live there. They come from California professing they can help the community when in fact they are destroying the community they are surrounded by. With the influx of hundreds of strangers, we feel unsafe in our homes. We have all wondered if we will need to install security systems in our homes, barns, sheds, et cetera. We wonder if we will need to put in gates to keep strangers from coming down our driveways because they cannot find the small entrance to 415. I know that with increase of people from outside our community, there will be an increase in crime and property damage. Wedding goers do not care about my property or my safety. I personally have to worry about my cows getting out because a stranger has damaged my fence line. Will my cow then get onto Lake Hazel or Meridian and cause injury to the public? I can be held liable through no fault of my own. My fence will be damaged many times by strangers going to and from a wedding. What kind of regard will the owners have for our personal property when they have not shown an interest in being part of our community? Will they pay for damages? How long will it take to get paid? I am extremely concerned about fire safety. Just one cigarette thrown out a window into my pasture on a hot summer day, and I'll lose my home. I spend a lot of time home because of physical limitations, and I spend a lot of time in my backyard in the spring, summer, and fall. If there is a constant flow of traffic 150 feet from my back patio, will I now have to spend most of my time inside my house as a prisoner? My privacy will be totally forfeit. Please, take the time to really consider what it would be like to have a wedding venue in your backyard. The entire length of the driveway is my backyard.
Ms. Jordan, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Jordan? Commissioner Exton.
Yes, Ms. Jordan, thank you for your comments regarding the exhibit you submitted. I just want some clarification, if you don't mind. Photo 18, you show the trees that I believe your husband referenced, the non-fruting plum-type trees down the driveway. In the exhibit you provided, it says that you were unaware that they were removed, but when your husband provided public comment, it seems that there was this kind of agreement with the owners of, you know, whatever happens to them, happens, it's okay. So I just wanted a little bit of clarity on that situation, just to understand that a little bit better.
When they first came to the property, we introduced ourselves as neighbors, brought them an apple pie, tried to have a neighborly relationship. And we did mention, unfortunately, that we weren't real happy with those trees. They were at the end of their life cycle. However, when they did take them down, they never notified us of their intent or what they were going to do or how they were going to supply any other kind of barrier for privacy. We have numerous times not been informed of things that they're going to do that affect us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a Ben Roach. Do you want, wish to speak?
Yes, sir.
Then please give your name and address.
Benjamin Roach, 415 West Lake Hazel Road, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am the son of Dave and Cheryl Roach, who owned the property. I've lived at the property since November of 2020. I helped work on the property, maintain anything on the property. I got married on the property. The property is very special to me. Obviously, I'm for their event. This is my parents'. It's been their dream for a long time, you know. We're connected in Idaho since I was a child. We have family here. Our entire family has moved here. Hearing the concerns from the neighbors is troublesome, to say the least. We want to do everything we can to help protect our privacy, make sure everything is within every law and code. You know, this is something that's going to, it's going to be a good thing. And we want it to be a good thing. And, yeah, I just, obviously, I fully support it. This is my parents'. I'll support anything they do, and I strongly support this. I got married there. It was beautiful. My wife and I still live there. We'll be moving out soon, but, yeah, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Hello, my name is Sharon Carlson. I live at 351 Wesley Hazel Road. I see there are four on the panel, on the commission panel. Thank you for being here tonight. But I ask you, which of you would like to have next door in your backyard a wedding venue? I dare say none of you. How is it that here in our Idaho, we can let one newcomer disrupt the peace, quiet, and security of our community? Combined, we have over 150 years of living in Idaho. They have three and a half. This is not their home, and they do not reside there as their primary residence. Their son lives there. They are not the kind of neighbor you would borrow a cup of sugar from. The consequential impact of having an event center next door to us affects our privacy. Currently, their 15-foot access road runs right along our 20-foot road. The only thing that divides those two are an old barbed wire fence and 30, 50-year-old trees, they're about 50 feet, that have been there for 50 years. This helps to provide privacy and noise reduction. With increased traffic, we would want a six-foot, solid vinyl noise suppression fence installed from the beginning of Lake Hazel along that fence line, going all the way back to Cooper's fence line property, and to go along all three other sides of the property. This is required at their expense in order to confine and contain... This is required at their expense in order to confine and contain their patrons. This fencing will help to control noise. It'll keep trash and wandering, nosey neighbors or their guests out of our neighborhood's yards. Maintaining our privacy and security should be of the utmost importance. To avoid people from driving down our private lane, they should be required to have their access road named and a stop sign at the end of the road. Our grandchildren are young, and they get to come spend the night with them and Papa frequently. I am very concerned and troubled about crime, loud noises, foul language, alcohol abuse till 10:00 p.m. at night. Please, please, limit the number of events to one a weekend and only a total of 12 a year. The fact of having them next door to us like this, it threatens our very state of mind. The adverse impacts of this venue threatens not only our safety, our privacy and security, but our way of life. I would like to add one thing, because I believe I still have 13 seconds. The width of the road that actually is their property is only 18.8 feet long, or wide, however you want to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any questions? Gerald Carlson. Name and address, Mr. Carlson.
Oh, my name is Gerald Carlson. I'm at 351 West Lake Hazel Road, and I want to thank all of you for giving me this time to talk with you. Our property is on the east side of this dirt road that leads from Lake Hazel, and it goes 600 and some feet. I don't know exactly. But with the ingress and egress of private vehicles, it generates a huge amount of dust. Now, with the predominantly winds being from the northwest, my property lays in the path of that dust. This, in itself, creates an environmental hazard for me. Now, our house probably would not be affected by this, but what makes a house a home? A home is a place where people live, and they live there for security. They live there for love. They live there because that is home. But home is not confined to the house. Home can be confined to the area around the house where you recreate, whether it be hobbying in the garage, hobbying in a shop. But for us, we have an outdoor veranda, and we have an outdoor pool. And as we all know, in the summer, it's fairly hot here in the daytime, but in the evening, it's a wonderful time to be outside. We grill, we eat, and we have an outdoor pool. Now, that pool is important to us because it allows us to renew friendship with our real neighbors. Also, it's a bonding experience for us and our family, okay? Now, I don't think I should be made to make a choice about retreating to my sanctuary of my house to avoid the noise and dust that will be created with this venue. I've lived in this valley since 1978. I know the members of this commission, I don't know you personally, but I do know that you're very objective with your decisions. I ask that you be objective with this choice of decision and make a choice that would not allow that venue to be part of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any questions? Thank you. Cheryl Roach? Okay, shaking her head, no. And Lindsey Roach? No. I have Amy Packer. Name and address, Ms. Packer.
My name is Amy Packer. I live at 6643 Cochrane Drive. I'm speaking loud, so others can hear. Thank you for listening. We live in the neighborhood. There are a few of us, because it's a country neighborhood. We also had a wedding. Our daughter got married this May. We also had a wedding at our house, and we notified the neighborhood, because that's what we do as neighbors. And I admit, it was a significant burden on our neighbors because we had parking signs, we had, you know, we told everybody where to park, we, but that didn't happen. They parked along the road. They do what they want to. The noise, there was noise. Our neighbors heard it. Of course, they're our neighbors, so they were okay with it, and we had told them about it. And they were happy for us because they know our daughter. But it was a burden on them, and I can't imagine having that every weekend, three times, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That's not something we want. Let's see. The nature of the property, well, there, the nature of our properties is that we build our homes away from the road, and so their property is kind of in the center of our neighborhood. So homes surround it, they will be very significantly impacted by a wedding venue. We are a residential neighborhood, and we don't want the commercialization. My fear is crime when you bring that many people to an area that looks, you know, like it could easily be, I can't think of the word, broken into or things of that nature. It will, crime will come when there are that many people that come and really don't care for the area because they don't have a vested interest. I've submitted a letter, so I will, I won't address that, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Packer. Any questions? Thank you. Stephen Packer. Okay. Travis Cooper. Name and address, Mr. Cooper.
My name is Travis Cooper. My address is 6650 Cary Candace Lane.
If you can pull that microphone a little closer to you, that'd be helpful.
Like that?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys for being here. Appreciate you guys for being here and listening to me. My first reason is privacy. One of the main reasons that people buy land is to have kind of like their own privacy, because the neighborhood's super crowded. It's annoying. Another thing is like, a reason with our house is we have a good patio, and our plan is to be in our patio a lot. Problem with the wedding venue is, is there isn't going to be a trillion people that are staring at us. There's no fence. There's to be 100% open to everybody. They'll be super loud. We have no privacy at all with this. Another thing is like our garage. We have like nice dirt bikes. We have important stuff that's in our garage. Everybody can see that. Everybody at the wedding venue will be able to see that. So we cannot open our garage during this time, because who knows what could happen? There could be crime. There could be anything. We could be broken into pretty easily. Another thing is noise. I play club or competitive baseball. I do dirt bike riding. I have a fitness class at school, like a strength training school. So when I get home, I'm tired. I want to go home and relax. When I go to bed, I will be able to hear this till 10 o'clock at night. And the problem is that, though, is with school, you need enough sleep for school. And when you're super tired at school, it messes with their learning. So that's another thing that messes with me. Another thing, like in the summer, when it gets super hot, like I have a window. It's like perfect view and everything. I want to open it to have fresh air. The wedding venue is there. I won't be able to do that, because it'll be, it could be loud music, loud screaming. There'll be cars, so I'll have to close that. Won't be able to have any fresh air and get super hot at night, because I have it upstairs, so all the heat rises to the upstairs. I just hope that you guys oppose this, and thank you for listening to what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Is it Brady Cooper?
Brandy.
Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Cooper, and I live, we are building a home, actually, on 6650 Cary Candace Lane, Meridian. Our home is on the east side of the property at 415 West Lake Hazel Road, and I'm here to tell you why I'm fully against the approval of this wedding venue. I grew up here in Idaho on acreage. I can remember hearing the crop dusters in the morning, enjoying the quietness of the country, and being able to go exploring with all my siblings. This has been a dream of ours to have this for our kids. Just being able to explore, go out. We have a habitat in the back. We're super excited about it. We want the quietness of Idaho and the country. Kids get enough chatter, everything at school, and we just want them to be able to come home, be kids, and just grow up that way. Having this wedding venue will completely ruin that quality of life that we have worked so hard for. We will not be able to sit outside and enjoy our backyard or patio without hearing the noises from people, music, and cars during all these events. We will not be able, as my son said, leave our windows open in the evening due to the noise, possible dust. My kids suffer from allergies as well, so this is something that we don't want any more dust for. This also leads me to my next point. We have a complete loss of privacy. We are a family that likes to spend our time outdoors. My kids are outside all the time, whether it's riding bikes, playing catch, playing football. No matter what, they're outside. Even in the winter, they're just, they're outside. We won't be able to keep our garage doors open as they face directly onto their property. We can see and hear everything from our back patio where we had planned on spending much of our family time. This home that we're building is our forever home. Like I said, we have worked so hard to get to this point. We love our community, and we're so happy to be part of it. As for the Roaches, this is not their home. This is just a business that we are all opposed to. And for these reasons, I please ask you to decline your approval for this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Any questions, Ms. Cooper? Chris, thank you very much. Chris Cooper.
Hi, my name is, my name is Chris Cooper. Thank you for having us here tonight, and I live at, or building at 655 Cary Candace Lane. In 1979, when I was three years old, my parents bought seven acres in Meridian off Amity Road. Growing up on acreage with three other siblings was amazing. We were almost always outside, riding bikes, playing in the dirt, or making up games. My parents still live there to this day, 45 years later. My wife Brandy and I met in high school, and through our dating years, we would talk about how lucky we were, growing up on property and the adventures we had as kids. We got married but couldn't afford a house, so we moved into an apartment with big dreams of one day having our own special place. After three years of saving every dime, we bought our first house in a subdivision. We'd always talk and dream about one day owning our own property in the country. In 2011, we found a nice foreclosure with a bigger lot and more space, which was perfect for what we could afford at the time. We are still leaving, living that subdivision life. In 2017, Brandy's parents asked us if we would be interested in splitting 10 acres with them in South Meridian. This has been our dream for as long as we've been together, and it was perfect. Five acres locked in on all four sides, less than 10 minutes from downtown Meridian, with a quiet country feel. In 2018, we sold our house and moved into the rental, half the size of our house with three kids, to save money while anticipating construction to start soon. Due to many unforeseen circumstances, it took five years to split the land and close to a year to get a permit before we finally broke ground in early 2023. Throughout the process of splitting the land, we met almost all of our surrounding neighbors, and everyone has been so nice and helpful throughout this entire process, like we have our own little country community. In 2023, we finally broke ground after 30 years together, 25 years of them married, and finally building our dream house on five acres, two miles from where I grew up, in a perfect, peaceful area. This past summer, we found out the Roaches were wanting to start a wedding venue, and we were asked by other neighbors how we felt about it. I feel like I've worked hard for 28 years to finally get and build what we've been dreaming of, and it's about to get taken away. At the end of the day, where do we all find our peace, joy, and happiness? Our homes. So what's the issue? The proposed wedding ceremony is only a couple hundred feet from our back patio, which we had no idea was going to be a thing when we first did this. This means it goes through, everyone who attends a wedding will be there staring right into our backyard and patio. That's far from my biggest issue, though. It's the noise. It's so peaceful back there, but it's so close that we will hear everything. Whatever they say, we're right there. I mean, we can touch them. We're going to be able to hear music from strangers, and who knows at what sound level. But we're not the only ones. All surrounding neighbors will be affected as well. Two years ago, when we, when we still bare-laundered, I found 11 empty vodka bottles on the side of our fence, right behind where they have a white house on their property. So I picked them up, and I lined them up all against the fence, because they clearly came from their property. So if their own family is throwing trash and vodka bottles on our property, what can we expect from complete strangers that we're not even going to know? The other issues I have with the owners won't even be living there, so it won't affect their personal lives whatsoever like it will affect ours. From them, this strictly about running business.
Do you need a couple?
If you wouldn't mind, please.
Okay, can we, Commissioners agree, give Mr. Cooper about another 30 seconds?
Yeah.
All right.
For them, it was strictly about running a business and making money. If this is approved, it will affect every one of us in the area negatively for the rest of our lives. The only ones who will gain anything from this is the Roaches. If there would have been an existing wedding venue from the beginning, we would have never been interested in this property. Please don't let them ruin our happy little community for their own personal gain. There's only so many of these areas in Meridian, and I plan to live there forever. I ask you, please, to decline this permit so my kids can grow up in a quiet rural area in Meridian that I was fortunate enough to. And like I said, that's kind of one of my big things. We started this process six years ago. Literally, we found a piece of heaven. I've been a hard-working construction guy, grew up two miles from this property. My wife and I have dreamed of this our whole lives. I know, I know they say they want to try to help us, but we literally set this whole property up right in this corner, literally right where they're doing the ceremonies and everything. I mean, we are literally just going to be bombarded. I mean, you couldn't put a fence high enough. There's nothing you can do to keep us from this. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Cooper. Kara Davis.
Good evening. My name is Kara Davis. I currently live at 12225 West Foxhaven Drive in Starr, 83669. My mother Cynthia Davis lives at 6530 Cochrane Drive, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Probably within, I would say, the next five years, that's where I will be returning to. It is the home that I grew up in. My mother and father built that home. I have all my memories of my father. Unfortunately, he passed away tragically in 1988, so that is where all of my memories are locked in with him. I knew the original owners, Frank and Barbara, of the property that the Roaches now own. I also knew their brother Jim and Joan Cochrane, who were also part of that subdivision. I know that it was never part of their intention to ever have a wedding venue at that location. They wanted it to be a quiet, nice, residential neighborhood. My friends and I, growing up, all the time, we could up and down the road, no problem whatsoever. Didn't worry about a thing. Out there having fun, playing. It was so nice and quiet and just residential. That's what I'm looking forward to in spending the rest of my life, once I do move back out there. I would never sell that property. It has far too much sentimental value for me. My brother also has Down Syndrome. He's at the back of the room. He will be living there the rest of his life. I will be taking care of him when my mom is no longer able to. He is very regimented. His bedroom window faces directly, looking at their property. He has strict routines. He just, that's how he is. It would affect him immensely. He goes to bed on a strict schedule. He, what the noise would affect him. Just, yeah, there is a open acreage back there. It's our back fence. I plan on having livestock when I move back there, so they will be back in that back pasture, which abuts their property. I don't want those animals to be disrupted, poked at, gawked at, noise affecting them, bothering them. I will start on the front three acres, doing alfalfa again like we did growing up, so that I can provide that for my animals. It is just a rural area that is more allocated for farm life. I know, like others have said, if anyone were to try and sell, that is not a selling point. that is not a selling point that we want to have out there, a wedding venue smack dab in the middle of what is known as Lake Hazel Estates. It's just not what that property was meant for, not what the Cochrans ever envisioned for that. And like I said, I know them personally, so I can speak to that. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Retschler.
I have one question. Um, did you say that your brother was autistic?
He has Down Syndrome.
Down Syndrome, okay. Does noise or anything like that affect him?
He is so regimented, yes. So when he, he has his window open, yes. There's air conditioning at my mom's house, but we don't use it very often. We have our windows open all of the time. Yes, that would definitely impact him and affect him.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Cynthia Davis.
Cynthia Davis, 6530 South Cochran Drive, Meridian, 83642. Thank you for this time. Uh, my property adjoins the west corner of three others, one of which is the proposed wedding venue. I have raised my two children in this single-family subdivision. We cut Christmas trees on occasion from the original neighbor, which just happens to be the proposed venue site. We went trick-or-treating in the neighborhood. We shared garden produce, and we helped one another. Close to two dozen children were either born or raised here. We felt safe and secure, and now a new generation is being raised. I have maintained and made several improvements to my home over the past forty-four years, so that I could enjoy the peace and quiet in my retirement years, enjoying my yard and deck, and provide a safe home and environment for my developmentally disabled son, who will live with me indefinitely. The proposed wedding venue will disrupt my future lifestyle as my backyard and pasture would become party central, within earshot and sight. Dozens of people coming and going, boisterous noise, displays of all kinds of behavior, loud music, cars creating dust, parked wherever, and lights from evening events, and all the rest that accompanies a public party venue. Crime is becoming a big issue in this valley. More people coming into my neighborhood to attend a public event might not respect the surrounding property, potentially causing issues. We have always been a rural residential subdivision of homes with pastures and outbuildings, as well as other homeowners bordering the Lake Hazel Estate subdivision. I am the last original homeowner in this subdivision. And I knew personally the original owners of the forty-acre plot, subdivided in the early nineteen-seventies by the Cochrans, into eight each acre parcels to be sold as family, single-family dwellings. My late husband and I purchased ours in 1977, before either of our children were born. I also knew the original owner of the property at 415 Lake Hazel. Knowing both these owners personally for several years, I know neither envisioned a business of this type in the subdivision. No one currently in our subdivision, including me, wants this venue, nor is there room for inclusion. This retired senior citizen does not want the disruption this proposed venue will create in her backyard and the complete change in dynamics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Retschler.
Hi. Um, you, in your letter, you mentioned the porta-potties?
Yes.
Are they along your fence line?
No, oh, I was mentioning those in regards to a potential party site, and that the porta-potties could be set up in the parking lot, which, of course, I can see right up the side of my rental.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there anyone else in the room that hasn't already spoken regarding this matter that would like to speak? Do we have Ms. Forbes on the line?
We do, Commissioner.
Okay.
She should be able to speak.
Ms. Forbes, can you hear us?
Evening.
Please give us your-
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please give us your name and address, and then we'll give you three minutes to speak.
Thank you. I am Judith Forbes, and my address is 665 West Lake Hazel Road, Meridian. And I have been a property owner within the Lake Hazel Estate subdivision for twenty-five years. I am very opposed to the wedding venue. Just one thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that if it was a requirement of the application, the neighborhood meeting, it stated that it could not take place more than six months prior to the acceptance of the application. And as I look at the application documents, which are all dated October nineteenth, the last neighborhood meeting on the certification is dated April eleventh, and so that is beyond this month's requirement. So that just did, that should be not allowed. I don't know. The most serious concern I have is fire. The parcel of land is only accessible by a narrow one-lane road. With the abundance of pine trees on the property, it would be impossible for emergency crews to access the fire. Our neighboring properties would immediately be in danger. Along two sides of the property are dry unmanaged fields, which are also adjacent to Pear Blossom subdivision, and several other residents. In the aerial photo, adjacent to the west side of the proposed venue, is, that field is rarely irrigated, and it is rather humorous that someone obtained a photo showing it as a green field, because it is always dry and unmanaged. The pressurized irrigation is only available to each landowner for twenty-four hours, once every day, every ten-day period. So the irrigation cannot be considered a fire prevention solution. Um, the Ada County Planner also stated that the canal is a picturesque backdrop for a wedding venue, and an irrigation canal is a dangerous place for a public event to be held. Weddings include many children who may or may not be unattended. The irrigation canal runs right down the middle of the property with no barriers to prevent children from entering the canal. This property is not a safe situation for weddings. Next question is the, the American Disabilities Compliance. In addition to the two parking spaces, I do not believe there are any ADA compliant pathways from the parking area through the trees and across the canal to the proposed wedding venue. The gravel parking lot would also be a hurdle, hurdle for a will care. Thank you for listening to all of our comments this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Before we turn the time over to the applicant for rebuttal, we will turn a little bit of time over to staff to address at least one of the questions that just came up, and see if there's any other ones relating to the legality of the public hearing notice.
Chairman Commissioners, I think the first thing that I'll touch on is that the application was received prior to that stamp that was put on, and I do have an email that shows when we received the application. So it was prior to that six months expiring.
Okay. Any questions that the Commissioners have for staff?
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
Yes. Um, Ms. Brandy, I was wondering if you can clarify, and it may actually be better for the applicant. Do we know, because I didn't notice in the application, will the driveway be paved, or will it, as it currently is presented, still be the gravel material?
Chairman, Commissioner Exton, the driveway is not required as a condition of approval or per the county engineer, or the comments that we've so far received from the Fire Marshal, to be paved. It can remain gravel.
Okay.
The county engineer, excuse me, did, um, provide a condition of the type of gravel that it needs to be.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have a few questions, I'm sorry. With the landscaping plans, um, can you just refresh us, do landscaping plans typically also cover fencing? Or is fencing like a separate plan that would get submitted to staff?
Chairman, Commissioner Exton, there's no requirement for event venues to be fully fenced, and a landscaping plan does not require fencing. It's based on a point system. Someone could use fencing as a part of meeting that required amount of points. You could require as a condition of approval in addition to require fencing.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. And then the last question I have is, when you, in that aerial, what is the building on the top right with like, looks kind of like a drive-through, paved situation around it and a parking lot?
Chairman, Commissioner Exton, um, I think I should maybe clarify some things on this map for you. So this is a home.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is a home under construction. This drive is a private drive that serves both of those properties. And then the driveway for this property is here on this strip, an easement for it. It is partially on this.
And it's separate from the shared driveway of the two properties?
It is separate from this private road that serves these two homes. That line of trees is kind of that separating point.
And then, yeah, if you, what, do you know what the building in the top right of that photo is? Like one parcel over?
Um, yeah, Chairman Commissioner Exton, that's a church.
Okay, thank you. And that's, that's all of my questions.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Brandy. We will invite the applicant to come back forward for a rebuttal. We'll have, give you ten minutes, and we will start the clock when you begin.
Okay, a couple of comments from the neighbors. In summer of 2022, we brought in rod mix for our driveway. So we did that in 2022. I think that was either June or July before Ben's wedding. The second was the plum trees that were on our driveway. Yeah. So-
Let's refrain from speaking during test.
Yes, yes, please. Only the applicant should be speaking at this point, and we would appreciate no further disruptions from those who are in attendance.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I had to ask a, a neighbor to, if it was okay if we took trees down that were on our property. So I'm still trying to figure that out. It would be like, in a subdivision, you cut a tree down on your backyard, but you would have to ask your neighbor first. So I'm trying to figure that out. And another issue is, this is our primary home. We live there. They see us drive in and out of our driveways every single day. I see them, they see us. So I'm not sure where you don't, this isn't their home, it's just a property. We live there. And we both work here. We have jobs here, so. I did hear that wedding that the Packers had in our backyard. I'm like, man, there's some loud music. So I hopped in my truck and went around, and I went, oh, they're having a wedding. It's, I mean, it was, it was crazy loud, but, um, the whole reason for our third phase is to have a barn, to where all the noise, music, everything will be indoors. It won't be, you know, outdoors in the free and clear. So people will drive in, park, go to the barn. When that's, event is over, go back to the parking lot and drive out. Not a big deal, but I have never personally met the Coopers. I've never had a conversation with them. She was at our neighborhood meeting in, in, in April, but there was no discussion of anything. The restrooms, they will not be out in the, where the parking lot is. They will be in a different location to where it's not visible. And we'll, we'll still work on that. Another big thing, people will keep talking about, which I think is great. They keep talking about peace and quiet and country living. I get it. But if you go from Overland by the eighty-four, and you drive up Meridian Road, the development is going crazy. Across the street from our driveway, there's a big acreage lot there. And one day, that is gonna be completely developed. It could be homes. It could be commercial. It could be a Costco across the street for all we know. And you wanna talk about noise and traffic. I, there's gonna be a day when it's coming, because I know on Lake Hazel, it's a two-lane road. It's soon gonna be a four-lane road, because they're gonna have to widen it. So that's kind of why my rebuttal on, on some of this stuff. So. I think I'm good. We will say that this is a no-smoking facility, but how do you, how do you control that? But when they sign, it'll be no smoking and, you know. So we're being upfront about, hey, we don't want people, you know, out here smoking, so. I think that's, I'm good with this part. So.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Any questions for the applicant?
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
I have a few more questions. Are you considering, you know, there has been a lot of concern from multiple of the community members and the neighbors about the dust, the dirt, and all of that with it being a gravel drive and the high traffic there. Are you open to the possibility, or are you entertaining the potential of paving the driveway and the entire parking lot? Because I know in the conditions, um, the two ADA spots have to be paved already.
Sure. Yeah, a year or two ago, when I was talking to someone from the county, they said you're gonna have to pave thirty feet from the road, so that anything that's on car tires has that thirty feet. But I would be totally open and would do. If it was one of the conditions, I would totally pave, you know, the driveway. I think it'd be even better for people who enter our property. So, not a, by the time you get to the parking lot, you're doing five miles an hour anyway. Now, down the parking lot, you know, you can't really control that, but I would totally pave the, the driveway, for sure.
Thank you. Um, and again, during the public testimony, there was a lot of concern about the privacy with fencing and things like that. Are you considering any fencing? You know, I know with the zoning type and the land use, with this being, um, you know, a social hall, there, it's not a requirement, but just out of curiosity, are you like considering any kind of fencing in addition to the landscaping points?
Um, probably. But it just depends upon the cost. Because, you know, to fulfill the requirement of code, we're gonna be spending every cent that we have in our piggy banks to try to figure out how we're gonna make that work. So.
Um, and then I have two more questions.
Yeah.
So on, in the, at least in the applicant, application packet, it's on page twenty-eight, there's the photo with the like drawn-in in pen, like little map. Um, and you can also kind of see it in like the Phase One slash Phase Two and Three, um, that's in the slideshow. You can clearly see the house, and then there's the white rectangle shape on the other side of the canal, kind of in the middle of the property. It looks like it's said to be a deck with bar. Is that where you plan on holding the ceremonies themselves, all, kind of in that center of the property?
We, that's where we want to, Phase Two is build a pavilion that's covered.
Okay.
So it would be in that big open area right there. So we already started doing some of the prep, you know, on the land itself, so that, you know, we can get, you know, a pavilion built in there.
So during the Phase One stage, um, where would the ceremony be held on the property? With just the, because I believe right now it's just the house, and then it would be the driveway parking situation, correct?
The one on the left.
Uh-huh.
You can see all those s- s- brown stripes. Those are, benches. Benches that, that Ben and his, his father-in-law built.
Okay.
They're s- super cool. And so that's, that's where his ceremony site was, and then we moved, you know, over to the big open space, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, and then my last question is, um, you know, there has been also concern from the neighbors about the frequency of the wedding- about the frequency of the weddings, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every week. You know, would you be open to the possibility of doing like a Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday, or even Friday, Sunday? So kind of limiting it down to two days a week instead of the three, but not changing, you know, the attendant size, things like that?
Those would be available days. Doesn't mean that, you know, it's going to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We'd have to figure out how are we going to balance the rehearsals? And it would be, it would, it could be a little tough. But, you know, probably, in my opinion, it could take us two years before we, you know, have 52 weeks a year. It could take two years to have 30 events a year. Because when, when we're all done, it's signed off, now we start our, our promotion, our marketing. And nothing could happen for six months because no one's, you know, unless another venue falls out and they want to, you know, hop in. So it could, we could have three, four, five events in the first year. So, you know, it's, it's still down the road.
Thank you. That is, that is all I have.
Any other questions? Commissioner Retschla?
I looked in your application and I noticed that you were going to have porta potties out there, right? And on your site?
We're still working through, for Ben's wedding, we had a super cool trailer. It had a men's and a women's, and it was air-conditioned, had music inside. And it was so nice. It, that wasn't a porta potty. That was like a nice bathroom trailer.
No, I'm, I'm familiar with them. That, the question is, is that are you going to put that along a property line against one of your neighbor's fence lines? Or where is that going to be positioned on here? And is it going to be stationary and stay there in that same position the whole time? Or how is that going to work?
Yeah, we're working through if we're going to rent one and keep it. But the trailer we had, there was a place right by the big open area.
Can you point it out on the map for me? There's a lot of open areas over there.
Open area is, and we had it brought in and it was, it, it sat there for two days and then they came and got it to go away.
So it'll be kind of in the center of your.
I'm not sure where the idea of having porta potties along a fence line or in the parking lot.
I think that was a concern.
Right, which is fine.
Okay.
That, that's a, that's a good concern, so. So the answer, no.
Okay, hold on just a moment. Can I have a moment, please? I also have a concern with how many events you want to hold per month. I am against you holding the events three days every weekend. I have to be quite frank. I don't care if it's in the next three months, six months, two years, doesn't matter to me. I think that there should be some kind of constraint on how many days that you can hold them every single weekend of every single month all the way through the year. Would you be amenable to less days during the weekend, like giving up a day?
Yeah, like I was, I was telling you that those are available days. So if it's a Friday and a Sunday. But I would totally comply to only two a weekend.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Scott?
So we talked, we talked about paving the road. The minute you turn that into a paved road, it's going to turn into a faster road because it's paved. Are you willing to put speed bumps on that road with the paving?
Only if it was a requirement. Because that means that as a resident, we're going, you know, multiple times a day and it's our personal driveway. Speed limits signs, if that was a condition, we would.
I mean, it turns from a personal driveway into kind of a business driveway when you start to put business on it. So I'm just wondering if that's a potential thought process. There's some other things to work out. Obviously, fire might have a problem, speed bumps in their access. I'm just wondering myself, so, okay. Some of the issues with the noise comes up. First and foremost, will there be a possibility of any of the festivities taking place outside? You talked about it being a part of a barn, but this is a phased situation where the final phase is the barn. First and foremost is, up until that barn gets billed, built, will the festivities have amplified speakers in the outside?
Yes.
And when the barn is built, is there a possibility that a possible customer could come and say, this barn is beautiful? We want it as a backdrop. We want our festivities outside still, though. Can you tell me about some of the safety on that canal that runs through? I know that there's a canal that runs through your property. Just for my own personal concerns, I, I've had someone close to me drown in the canal. So I was just kind of interested in what you would have for protocols for that canal that runs through because it would, it's an active canal for part of the year. I mean, it probably obviously adds the ambiance of having like a creek, but it can also be a very dangerous canal, so.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can look at that issue and, and see what we can come up with. And because obviously, it's going to, code is going to probably dictate that. So I totally understand that. It would be great not to, and I understand the liability, but it's probably going to end up coming up.
Do a, do you know, like, we're really early in this process still, but do you have like a minimum viable number of events you're going to need to be profitable for this?
I really don't. I mean, it just depends upon the need for someone who wants to get married there.
Okay.
You know.
Is it going to be only for weddings or I saw it was going to be social clothes?
Yeah, I mean, if, I've known people who have venues like this and, you know, a, a corporate event, well, they'll say, hey, let's have a picnic. Or, you know, we want to do this event outside. And we would be, which mostly would be, I would think, in business hours. So they want to do a lunch or whatever.
And then are you, you will be serving alcohol at these events?
We won't provide anything. No food, no alcohol, no DJ. Everyone's going to bring their own stuff in.
Okay, so they, but you will allow alcohol if it were, if they brought it in?
Sure.
Okay. Would you be willing to, I think the curfew currently says 10:00 PM. Would you be willing to reduce that at all? Or is that part of the, I guess, the package is trying to allow them to stay later and things like that?
Correct. You know, what's interesting is for Ben's wedding, I went to this building to get a noise permit. Because I know some places, they're like, you need to have a permit if the police show up. At least you've done your due diligence to get your permit. So I went and I asked for the, a noise permit and they went, we don't know what that is. We don't have one. I'm like, really? But they did say you need to be quiet at 10 o'clock. And at 10 o'clock, we were completely quiet. And they also gave me a name of an officer to where I called him and went to a voicemail. I just left a message saying, hey, this is what we're doing tonight just so you know if somebody calls. So we tried to do all of our upfront work to make sure that, you know, we're complying.
So then, what, would amplified music be absolutely necessary? Is that something that you could part with, like potentially eliminating the speakers? Because there's a lot of concerns for noise. And you yourself said you heard the other neighbor's wedding. It was crazy loud. And so I'm just wanting, I mean, by proxy, if your, their wedding was crazy loud, your events are going to be crazy loud too if they're bringing in their own amplified music?
Yeah, it'll be monitored. Like I said, when we had ours, when the music was playing during the reception, I, I was walking our fence line and I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear the music. So yes, it will be monitored for decibels in how loud it is.
You know how you would do that?
As a homeowner, I would say turn it down. So.
That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Retschla, do you have something else?
Sorry, I just, I just was looking at something. When you say Monday through Thursday tours, what does that mean?
I'll address that. If somebody is looking for a venue to get married and they're like, hey, let's go check that out, then by appointment, we would allow, you know, a bride, groom, parents, whatever, come during the week by appointment to just look and check it out and, you know, see if they do or do not want to get married there. That's what that would be.
Okay, so there's not going to be tour groups or anything like that for businesses or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Any further questions for the applicant? Mr. Roach, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are now ready to conclude the public testimony portion of this meeting. And at this point, a motion will be made and will be considered and then voted upon. So I'm looking for a motion, one way or the other, with respect to this application.
Mr. Chair, I have kind of a question here.
Okay, this may be a question for Mr. Letson.
It'd have to be, it's for, it's for Leon. So. I, I don't know how to approach this and that's why I'm kind of reaching out at this point with, there are so many conditions that have come up, like so many, that at some point, we, we have to look at this and go, do we just need to relook this whole thing? And my question is, does that mean, would it be better if it were tabled to allow a few months of discussion with fire, with all of these things we came up with? Or would it, should it be a motion to deny and they have to resubmit? I'm just, I just, I want to make sure that we're not, we're not like shutting this whole process down. But there's so much here that, there's a lot of things where, at least for me, I'm like, there's a lot of conditions that we'd have to throw on this or whatever. So I'm just kind of getting your opinion on that.
Mr. Letson, do you want to go ahead and address that?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, you know, I think it is a conditional use permit. So conditions can be added to a project. I think you're asking for advice as to how many conditions are too many conditions and when we should say yes or no. And that's really kind of up to this commission to decide. I do think that if you feel like you have enough outstanding questions that need answered and you want those answered before you make your decision, that would be an appropriate time to table and say, hey, is this, is this 20-foot driveway even possible? Go talk to the, the fire department. Because if they're not going to allow two-way traffic on this, then yeah, we might have an issue with emergency access. Or, hey, we need to understand where, an improved site plan that shows screening in the form of fencing or location of porta potties or things like that. So if you feel like you have a lot of outstanding questions along those lines or even the operation of the venue, maybe the limited days, I think it's appropriate to table and give direction to the applicant to go answer those questions. And then in 30 or 60 days, come back and brief you. And then you have a chance to make a more well-informed decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Letson. So we're still at a point of looking for a motion, either for or against this project.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Based on the findings, facts and conclusion law contained here in the testimony from the public hearing, I recommend we table this for 60 days so that we can allow the applicant to address the several questions that likely will turn up in the minutes as well as the recording of this. So they can address what I think are several questions, at least I have, on this project and allow the staff to review those and come back with a more complete picture so we can make a more informed decision.
Chairman Commissioners, just to give you a heads up, the March, would be March 14th for the public hearing date, which is approximately 60 days. So we just can't always comply with 60 days, but March 14th would be about 60 days from now.
Okay.
So a motion has been made. Is there a second?
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
May I make a, kind of like tentatively, second with a request to modify and then I'll second? That allowed, or should I let it be seconded fully first?
You, you really wouldn't be seconding his motion.
That's fair. Okay.
So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I will second.
Okay, Commissioner Retschla is seconded. So we'll turn the time over to Mr. Scott. Commissioner Scott, for discussion about why it should be tabled, which I think you've largely already said. And then we can hear from the other commissioners and have a discussion about this matter. So Commissioner Scott?
Yes, I've largely said what I, I believe, there's, there's just a lot of questions, a lot of concern from neighbors that I believe should be answered. And while I am a very big property rights person, I also believe that we should not be burdening neighbors. And if we can find some sort of middle ground here, I just don't think there's enough information provided that everyone can at least come to some sort of agreement. Not everyone's going to be happy. That's just the way things work. That's what our job is. But I, I just, trying to make a decision on this either way has put me in a position where I, I just don't think I'm well enough for it. I, I asked several questions and it would put lots of conditions. And I'm actually interested in what Commissioner Exton has to say with his, his suggestion, so.
Commissioner Exton.
Yes, thank you. My only request potentially, if the motion maker and the seconder would entertain it, is just to remove the 60 days. Just that way it gives the applicant more flexibility in case it takes 90. That way it doesn't come before us at that 60-day mark and we have to table it again.
We need a, we probably need a date-specific tabling rather than leaving it wide open just for the benefit of people who are interested in the project, so.
Is there a limit on that, though? Like?
Technically, no.
But you're suggesting like?
I mean, I threw out 60 days because it doesn't sound like, the things you might be asking for would take more than that time. And again, I'm jumping in here while you've closed this, so sorry about that. I do support the date-specific tabling. And then I would also say, give very specific things you want them to go explore and come back with. And then thirdly, have a submittal deadline to staff to be able to accept those. Hopefully notify the neighbors, I'd say a minimum of 15 days prior to the hearing with the updated information so that they can comment appropriately on any changes made to the project. So those are things to consider as you potentially amend your motion or, or someone, or modifies your motion, so.
What's the 90-day one then? Because considering stuff?
That would be April, it would be April something. Let me find that real quick. It is, I believe it's April 11th, but there might be something, I think it's April 11th for that one. We'll check our public hearing schedule while you're, yeah, April 11th, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Scott? So with that, please strike my removing the 60 days comment. But I would like to throw out some amendments and just kind of what I would like to also see from a potential tabling. I would definitely love to see you kind of that driveway analysis with the fire marshal and essentially get like an actual feasibility study type of thing. Can this even be, you know, supported, you know, the way it is? Will the trees have to be taken down? If they are taken down, will it be 20 feet, et cetera? I personally would love to see a much clearer and more, just like, simple, you know, pseudo like event site plan. You know, while I do appreciate all the effort that the applicant put in making those, you know, phases and all of that over the aerial, it was still just kind of a little questionable in terms of being able to understand it, you know, easily. So I'd like, I'd love to see, you know, a little bit more thought, a little bit more clarity in the way the land is going to be used at each phase. Understanding that each phase, the use and where things will be will, you know, change slightly. And I would also like to add in that third condition that staff did recommend with the 15 days prior to the public meeting deadline to get things into staff. That way public has ample time to comment on those. And in addition, I would like to see a little bit more information if possible. I would be okay reviewing, seeing this application again without it. But some more information on kind of the proposed landscaping, things like that, because I didn't notice them in the application. So just some more clarity on kind of what landscaping you all will be proposing. Just that way we can make a more informed decision around that with, you know, the concerns about privacy, things like that. So that's my, those are my comments.
Yes, Commissioner Scott, you would have to accept the amendment if you were willing to accept those or you may add additional things, if you have other outstanding items you want to add, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to have to add some because when you said that, I have to add all, some of the questions I have. I'm going to have to, so I wrote his down. I'm just going to do it all in one.
Gotcha.
Did you have?
Yes. Hold on a second. I wanted to see if they would be amenable to no parking signs on the private roadway. That would be something I'd want to see. Also, the limiting days two per weekend, whether that be Friday or Saturday, or Friday or Sunday. And I think that's about it for me.
Commissioner Retschla, can I ask, or, sorry, Chairman Birch?
Yes.
Ask a clarifying question to Commissioner Retschla. With the two, like the no more than two days, are you saying like completely change their schedule from the dates available, only being available two days? Or are you saying you can only have two weddings booked in one week, but they can choose which of the three days they can? choose which of the three days they can book from? Because right now, you know, as the, the way applicant described it is, you know, assuming they're not fully booked, you know, someone can go in and say, I want a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday? So are you saying that everyone will be able to choose between Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but once they have someone on Friday and someone on Saturday, then no one can book that Sunday for that week?
Yeah.
There was only two wed, two booked weddings in a week?
In a weekend.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, real quick, just to kind of clarify, my, my tabling isn't, I was just gonna say, come back with an analysis of minimum viable number of days that they could do. And then, because it sounds like you're talking about adding a condition to a final decision, not, you're, are you trying to, I'm just trying to get a fact finding, a table for fact-finding. So I guess, I was gonna say, how many days minimum per year, per week is going to be viable? Allow them to do that analysis and then come back. And then, at the meeting in April, we would put the conditions you would want, if that's what we thought was appropriate at the time. You understand what I'm saying?
That's fine.
Okay.
Any further discussion? So, my thoughts are these. I will be voting against tabling this, and I want to give my reasons for that. This is an older established neighborhood. Ada County Code has multiple provisions in Section 85B that are applicable to this particular situation. Two of those provisions are, that the proposed use is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The second one of those is, the proposed use shall not create undue adverse impacts on surrounding properties. So who is the surrounding properties? It's these people in this room. This is the neighborhood. These are the people whose properties will be adversely affected, and they have at length, in the comments and in their public testimony, described their concerns, alcohol, traffic, safety, noise, dust, music, privacy, trash. Those are legitimate concerns, and they are concerns that directly impact the surrounding properties, that do in fact, create undue adverse impacts on those properties. And the residents here, the neighborhood, they've come together and as one voice, other than the applicant, have said, it does have those impacts on us. It will be detrimental to us. The... You could impose a number of restrictions on the property, but if you impose enough restrictions on the property, to make it where it would not have a detrimental adverse impact, it would not be financially viable. And, and I feel badly that the Roaches bought a property that could not be used for the purpose that they want to use it for. But that happens sometimes. I worked for a company that once bought a piece of property where they were going to put up a retail building, only to find out, they could not put up a retail building there, because they didn't do enough research and find out that that was the case. That is also true of the Roaches. The reason the Roaches are here tonight is because they cannot do by right what they want to do. And what they want to do is to take a quiet, established residential neighborhood and put an event center in that neighborhood, that will destroy the peace and quiet and character of the neighborhood. My recommendation is to not vote to table it, but to vote against it, and it will invariably be appealed, and then an elected body can decide whether or not this event, wedding venue, will go into this quiet residential neighborhood, as opposed to this appointed body. So, those are my views on this matter. Further discussion?
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
Well, I do agree with everything you said in regards to this project modifying and changing and impacting the neighbors. I do think it is fair to the applicant to at least allow them this ability to get a more robust plan essentially, and present it to us. Because in, you know, prior projects, looking more towards the Eagle Foothills area, where there has been, you know, neighborhood pushback on a project, things like that, we've, you know, somewhat consistently tabled the project, allowed them to come back, you know, with revised plans, things like that, and, you know, have that discussion with the neighbors. Sometimes it works great, sometimes it doesn't. But I think, you know, kind of in keeping with that somewhat consistency, I think it is something that we should extend to the applicants here. And again, regardless of what happens at our level, that ability to appeal is always there on the table. But I do truly think it would be, in, you know, again, I think it would just be fair to allow them to, you know, answer some of these questions before we make that, you know, final decision as this body, on an approval or denial. But again, I do completely agree with you, there will be massive impacts on this, especially as it is currently presented. So yeah, that is, that's just my comments on yours.
And I appreciate that perspective, Commissioner Exton. I think that the applicant has been very candid with us. I think they have said, this is what we want to do. But unfortunately, what they want to do, I see no degree of restrictions that we could put on this property, that would still allow it to be, as I said, financially viable, that would not have the very adverse impacts that this neighborhood and these people that are here, that are the neighborhood, have expressed their concerns about. And so my concern with going through the motions of tabling it, having these folks have to come back in and listening to the same arguments again, it's going to be exactly where we are today. They will not be satisfied with what amounts to an event center at the end of a dead-end road that will pass every one of these properties. Commissioner Retsloff, did you have thoughts, comments? I could tell by looking at you, you probably did.
I mean, no, I think it's, I agree with both of you. I think, I don't know if the applicant, I mean, I think he's being forthright, I just, I guess I'm not sure, or I don't feel as sure for him that he will come back with a better or improved plan. And I can see where you're coming from, as far as giving him more time may not yield any better results on his part. So, if we just deny it at this point, he just goes straight on an appeal to the commissioners and we're done. And he's done. And then they can go ahead and handle it at that point.
Unless the commissioners kick it back to us for a lack of information.
Yeah, that's a possibility as well.
They do that.
So, so a motion has been made. I'm not sure, I think it has been perhaps modified, so...
I think I have to modify it.
So we would need to have the motion made again and seconded before we can vote on it.
Mr. Chair, hold on, there we go. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Scott.
Now, before I make the motion, what I, I want to be somewhat clear here. I'm trying, with the tabling, I'm trying to cut the middle somewhat, because we don't want to put a burden on all these people coming back to hear the same thing, but in light of being fair, that we need to allow them to come back to make that, and maybe they'll surprise us, maybe they'll come to some sort of agreement. And I'm not saying I'm a, I am, at this point, looking at it with too many questions to approve it, for sure. That's why I'm gonna give them, I want my table is to give them opportunity to fix that. If they don't come back with a plan that I'm accepting, I'm not, obviously, we're not, I'm not gonna recommend tabling this again, I'm gonna look at it and go, alright, you had your chance. So, I just wanted to be clear that, because of this, it's kind of my way of not taking a side, because I just don't have enough information to make a decision in either direction, because there just isn't enough there to make. We've heard some conflicting stuff about, from one side, we've heard some conflicting stuff, and I just want some clarity. So that's kind of my explanation for it. And I fully understand, I agree with Commissioner Birch, and I agree with Commissioner Exton, and I have the same situation as Commissioner Retsloff, where I agree with both of you. You both are right. But when that comes up, I think the best course of action is to get more clarity, rather than shut it down at this point. I know he'll have the, they'll have the ability to appeal, but are we doing our due diligence by kind of kicking the can to the commissioners without, with a lot of questions? So, whether it's through an appeal or through an approval. So, with that, I'm, motion to amend my original motion to table this with the following requirements, that the applicant come back with answers on specifically a driveway analysis, including a discussion from fire, the various fire entities that have, I guess, oversight of this area, I think it's Whitney Fire is what it was. So, have them have more input and more, excuse me, discussion. Some sort of analysis on noise, I'm not sure what that would look like, but some sort of analysis to discuss noise, and what that would look like for the neighbors and the impact there. As Commissioner Exton said, a better site plan by phase, to show exactly by phase what is taking place, and how that would look with estimated timelines. I know a lot of this stuff is going to be estimates, but timelines for that, you said, we got, we basically have from right now to five years. I would like to see that in phases, as Commissioner Exton said. All of this needs to be provided 15 days prior to the April 11th meeting, you said, so that staff has time to review it. Review landscaping plan, review privacy plan, potential for signage, for no parking, and then come back with an analysis on what is viable for the number of events you can have, so that we can be better informed on deciding whether two events, or one event, or three events, or 10 events a year versus 30 events is the most appropriate, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
That was long-winded.
Mr. Letson?
Commissioner Scott, I did want to make a clarification, it is Kuna Rural Fire District.
Oh, sorry, Kuna Rural.
And the Idaho State Fire Marshal has also weighed in, so we've allowed, in the condition, either of those two, but Kuna Rural Fire is the responding district. And then, Mr. Ex, Commissioner Exton had a request for a site plan showing the location of specific activities and where they'll occur on-site, so you might want to add that just as a heads-up.
Include, can I just broadly say include Commissioner Exton's suggestions?
I think that was the only one that was outstanding, was just the activity site plan, like where things are gonna occur.
And then also include activity site plan in that as well.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
There was also the 15-day...
I said that.
Oh, okay, just kidding. And then the landscaping, if possible.
Yeah, I said that, too.
Oh, just kidding. Never mind. It was a blur.
I know, that was a lot, that was the biggest motion I've ever made.
I do have a quick question as well, for Leon and Ms. Branding as well. In the staff presentation, there was the mention of, like, adding condition for the three-phase part, if it gets approved, is that something we need to put in this table motion at all? Or, is that, okay.
Nope.
Okay, cool.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Exton has seconded. Is there any further discussion before we vote on the motion to table? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And so, we are tied, which means that the motion does not pass, correct?
That's correct, yep.
All right, so, we are ready for another motion, and, and I just want to say, before that other motion is made, that I respect everything that all the commissioners have said. I also respect the members of the audience and attendance and the applicant. The Board of County Commissioners is an elected body. There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of information in the record about the concerns of the neighbors regarding this project. Between now and when the applicant would go before the Board of County Commissioners, there would be a world of time to address those matters. That meeting before the Board of County Commissioners would look very much like this meeting. And, what, they were around till, was it 11:30 last night that they were there? So, they're used to staying late. And, and so, there would be a lot of opportunity to air the same concerns that would be voiced here. And it would be, hopefully, of course, they could table it as well, but it could be the final decision, rather than coming back to us. So, any event, we need another motion with respect to this matter. And we could be here all night, because if that motion fails too, then I don't know where we're going.
Chairman Birch?
Commissioner Exton?
I have another question for Leon and staff.
Okay.
The way this application is, we'd be making like a full cut-and-dry approval or denial with this, is there any way, this may be like way too messy, so also I'm not like set on this, is there any way we can like send it to the Board of County Commissioners as a recommendation?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
Our code doesn't allow you to make a recommendation to the board, you are the final decision-making body for conditional use permits, so...
So we're looking for a motion. Mr. Letson, I presume I can make a motion as well?
Yeah, all commissioners are allowed to make motions, there's no rule against that.
In that case, I will make the motion, based upon the findings of fact, conclusions of law contained in the staff report, and the testimony from the public hearing. The commission recommends disapproval of project number 202302320-CU-MSP. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Retsloff has seconded. Now a discussion as to this motion. So, I have already given the reasons for why I believe it's appropriate. I'm, I, I have a concern about just jerking these people around. They have come here in good faith, they have expressed their reasons. I think, I can't speak for them, but I think if you polled them, they would say, there's probably no degree of conditions that's going to make them feel that they are not having an adverse impact on their property. Therefore, I would like to see the Board of County Commissioners make the call on this. Even if we had the other three commissioners here, what we would just have, I believe, is a protracted discussion along the lines that we've already had.
Chairman Birch, if I may?
Commissioner Exton?
Well, again, I do, you know, agree to a certain extent with, you know, the logic and everything. You are also making the guess that the applicant will then appeal this for the board to review it and have their say. There's also the chance that they may not appeal it, you know? And also, with tabling, there's also the chance that if the applicant does start working on the, you know, objectives with the tabling, that they could also withdraw, if they do realize, you know, this is just not viable for us, or this is too intensive of a process project, et cetera. I don't feel comfortable personally denying this and just assuming someone will appeal it, because it was a denial, and then kind of lay that onus on a final decision on the board, when it may never get to the board, if that makes sense. You know, if this was like a recommendation to the board, I'd, you know, feel a lot more comfortable, you know, saying, you know, it's rocky now, let's recommend denial. But since it starts and ends with us, unless it's an appeal, if it gets appealed, I don't feel that that's like a fair bet, essentially, to just recommend, you know, assume that this will get appealed to the board, and then, you know, be comfortable with that. But that's just my own personal opinion on that.
That is a fair comment, and it is my assumption that because the applicant purchased the property for this use, that they will not go quietly into the dark if we say no.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Scott.
So, I... So I still am standing by my original thought as well, and I agree with Commissioner Exton because I know we're not like, we're not a courtroom, but we have some sort of standards. And I know you are in fact a lawyer. I don't think you, we should ever be deciding on the assumption of an appeal. I don't think any lawyer goes, I'm going to, or any judge goes, I'm going to make this decision on the assumption that it's going to get appealed. Again, I'm not a lawyer in that regard, but I just don't think that's good business to assume, make a decision and then go appeal it when I, when I don't have all of the information. And so I almost think that if we continue to 50/50 this, that almost leads to the need to table it instead of force deny it or something, the need to table it so that we can potentially have a broader array of opinions from our fellow commissioners that aren't here as well as have the ability to gain more knowledge on what needs to be said here. And I fully understand that if there is a burden of bringing the people here, but we are, if we are saying that we are focusing only on their burden while disregarding the burden of giving them, the applicant a denial, that's not fair in my opinion. If we're going to be burdening anyone, we need to burden everyone. Burden the applicant with coming back with a bunch of new information and then also giving the public the opportunity to come back and discuss that new information with us. And that's just my thought on that.
Commissioner Birch, do we have a second on your motion? I don't know if I heard.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Retsloff, I'm sorry.
Yeah. You know, I'm sorry.
Please, go ahead.
May I speak? You know, I just think that it's part of our job to approve or deny, and this is only a recommendation, right?
We're final.
This is the recommendation to the commissioner.
We are final.
Oh, we're in the final, okay.
It is final subject to an appeal to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, so that is part of our job. Those are the decisions that we have to make, period. We can table if we would like, but what I'm seeing is, is I agree with our chairman. We have a large, almost all neighbors here from that community, that small community, they're all sitting out there, they're all saying no. They have legitimate reasons and concerns why. It's not just because of one or two reasons. They are legitimate concerns with a small roadway, a private roadway, mind you, that cannot be widened unless there's, you know, they take down a whole row of trees. There's just so many things in here and so many detailed letters from these neighbors. I just don't feel like I can ignore it and say, yeah, no, just come back in three months and we'll make it work. That just doesn't make sense to me personally. I get what you're saying, but it just doesn't make sense to me. And so, I mean, if, he will have time, if he truly wants to work with his neighbors or if they're at an impasse, because it kind of sounds to me like that they're at an impasse right now. And so I just don't really see how that's going to change in 90 days. And if they get before the commissioners, then, you know, I just think it's more expedient for all concerned. This has been probably going on, I don't know how many months already with the planning, the money that they've paid, everything that they've done. I just can't see them just walking away. That's true. I agree with, with the chairman on that issue. And they did buy this property specifically to do this, which was their testimony. So I really do agree with the chairman that it should just go straight, that we should just deny it and let it go straight to the commissioners when he appeals it and see what they do. These, this, this public that's here now, they are not going to change their mind. Their concerns are legitimate. That's how I feel, sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Scott.
The problem is, is we are the final. There's a confusion here that this is not a recommendation. We are the final, end of story, and then bookend, they can appeal. We're not trying, our job, as you said, is to make a decision. I don't have enough information to make that decision because there's so many vague things in here. A lot of the stuff that the public has said is absolutely valid, but I also, in the interest of fairness, want to give the applicant the opportunity to come back and say, we heard what they said. We understand because often in things like community meetings, they don't see things like we do. They don't understand the rules, the laws. So we ask different questions, giving them the opportunity to go back and go, okay, now we understand what we need to do and come back. This is not an approval from me. This is giving them the chance to convince me again. This is not some, I'm not trying to say, come back again and we'll try this all over again. No, this is them coming back to convince me that they, that this is something that should be done. And if that doesn't happen, then so be it. But I want to give them the opportunity to do it because that's the way our systems work. We don't, we can't have what we would consider, and I understand this idea of the undue burden. And I fully acknowledge in this state, there potentially is undue burden on those people, but I want to give them the chance because we cannot be operating in the tyranny of the majority here. We have to understand that we want to see what they come back with, with a better thought process, a better product. And if that is not good enough, then we deny it as the final body approving this, not kicking the can to a Board of County Commissioners because we can, because we, we can say no and then go ahead and appeal it. And that's just, and we're kind of going around in circles. I just fully believe that in the current state, we just need way more information. And if we say they'll have a, they can get that information for an appeal, we're not doing our job. We're not doing our job by saying, get the information for us so we can have the informed decision because we are the final say on conditions of approval and things like that.
It's unfortunate that we do not have an odd number of commissioners present tonight. And I have the distinct feeling that the members of the public are in the unfortunate position of watching how sausage is being made here. The, Commissioner Scott, let me just address one of the things that you have just mentioned about the applicant coming back. So let's just pose this as what the neighbors might feel good about. No alcohol of any kind being allowed at the venue. Limited number of days of operation, not Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but one day, two days. Not 150 people, but no more than 50 people. When you start adding up those things, that any reasonable person would say, well, if it's beyond that, it would be an adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Would that be something that the applicant is likely to come back and do, knowing that? And I don't run wedding venues, but, but I do have a sense of what would be financially viable and what would not be. And that would not be because it is too limited and you're not going to have a wedding venue unless it's an LDS wedding venue where you have no alcohol served. And so given that, I just have a great deal of difficulty seeing what possible thing the applicant could come back with that would not be an undue adverse impact to the surrounding properties.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Scott.
Just quickly to respond to that, I mean, none of us are wedding venue planners, which is why I want the applicant to come back and tell us what the impact would be after their analysis because we are not the ones up here trying to make an assumption decision based on their business. I want to know what is viable for their business because they should personally know and they can come back in 90 days and tell us instead of us trying to guess as not experts, as laypeople right here, to make that decision on their behalf without all of the information.
Well, I'm not prepared to keep, my recommendation is not to keep these folks here all night.
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
Quick question for Leon again. With applications, if they're denied by us and we're the final body and there's no appeal, can the applicant come back with a modified application and essentially start the process all over again?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, there's no timeframe or time limit on reapplication, so you deny, they could submit a new application the next day and we'd start the process over. So that is a possibility.
Thank you. Chairman Birch, can I call the question on the motion to deny?
Sorry?
May I call the question on the motion to deny?
Yes. I'm sorry, may you?
Call the question.
Have a vote on it. All right, a motion has been made and seconded with respect to the motion to deny this project. All those in favor of denying the project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
So it is three to one for denial. Again, we very much appreciate everyone who's been in attendance. We appreciate the applicant and their candor. We appreciate the level of emotion that the residents have. And there's just difficult issues, and this is one of them. But in any event, we thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Letson, do we have to, is this the same situation where we're going to have to let you guys redo the whole thing?
We, yeah, Chairman Commissioners, we need to revise findings to reflect the decision made here today. Funny enough, February is a weird month where the second, Thursday, technically the eighth, I might look to one of my staff to, we could table it to the first P&amp;Z hearing in February, which is either the eighth or the 15th, and we'll give advance notice, people, but I can't recall what we did with our schedule. We might, can someone look that up for me real quick? Our public hearing schedule for February?
It's the 15th.
It is the 15th, okay.
So for the benefit of the public, what we're talking about doing is not tabling the decision on the project. We're simply tabling to give time for staff to rewrite their report where they recommended approval and instead the report would be rewritten to recommend denial. So that is what the tabling is about. So we do need a motion to table so that staff can revise the report.
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
I would like to move to table project 202302320-CU-MSP to the February 15th, 2024 meeting and to allow staff time to revise the provided findings to reflect a denial decision.
Commissioner Exton has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Retsloff has seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are done. Thank you very much for your attendance. We are now ready for approval of minutes.
Chairman Birch.
Commissioner Exton.
I move to approve the minutes from the December 14th, 2023 meeting.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye as well. Any of us opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain since I was not here at the meeting.
So that becomes, is that?
Please note that Commissioner Retsloff has abstained, so it was three in favor.
Can we do that because there's only four of us?
Yeah, it's a, it's a majority of the quorum.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so you're fine. If three of you say we're good with the minutes, then we can do this, so, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Letson. What happened?
Yeah.
Why were they there till 11:30 last night?
It was quite, yeah, it was quite the night. So several items on the agenda, a lot of them had lots of testimony. The first item was a storage, outdoor storage project near Cuna city limits requiring a variance conditional use and master site plan. They had tabled it for a revised site plan and asking the applicant to maybe revise it based on some neighbors' concerns. Board was ultimately unsatisfied with the revisions, and so they denied that project. We also had a Plumer and Platt private road in Hillside development near the Dry Creek Ranch area for seven lots. That was approved. We had a variance to, boy, these mics are a little big tonight. A variance to the required setbacks for a detached accessory structure. This was off of the, oh, Tarriga Lane, and I apologize, I think that's Meridian-Cuna area. That was ultimately approved by the board. Then we had an appeal of a hobby kennel. Those are staff-level applications and any appeal goes to the board. That appeal was denied and the hobby kennel was ultimately approved and upheld. That was in the Southwest Boise area. We had a gentleman attempting to use a variance to make a parcel buildable. It was undersized for the zone. Lot of discussion on that one. This was kind of near the Eagle City Limits Dry Creek Ranch area near Highway 55. That variance was denied. There was a variance in a private road for a project that also had an undersized lot seeking to make that property buildable. The private road was to provide access and frontage. The board did decide to approve that one. And then finally, the Peg Companies project out there at Lockwood and Five Mile that you heard and made a recommendation of denial to the board. They heard a great deal of testimony up until 11:30 at night and ultimately tabled that to an open business meeting next Tuesday after hearing all testimony to make a decision. So we'll know what they do with that one next Tuesday.
That's not fair. They got to do these open business meetings. We just got to.
I know, I know. If you guys want to come in and hang out with us at 9:00 a.m., we could maybe give you some open business meetings, but that's pretty much it. So do you have any questions on any of the projects or?
Oh, I have a headache.
You have a headache? I'm sorry. All right, well, thank you, and we will do elections next month. And forgive me for forgetting what day our hearing was. It's a weird one where it's always the second Tuesday, but sometimes that second Tuesday is like on the eighth and we're a little like, that's not going to make sense, it's not going to work for the board meeting. So it was the 15th, so thank you for that. We'll see you on the 15th. We will hold elections. These guys are doing a great job. If you want to nominate them again and they're up for it, great. If anybody wants to, wants to throw their hat in the ring, now's the time. And if you want to talk to me about what that means, I'm happy to give you my, my input. Gosh, anything else?
Say that, but they may be like, we're done with this.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I mean.
I know, no, they have a choice.
Yeah. Well, there was the proposal of just nominating those who are not here and holding the election.
I know.
Maybe a heads up for anybody who misses a future meeting, you might find yourself chairperson or vice chair.
And I will say, I just realized I will actually not be at the February 15th meeting because I'll be on a plane, so that may be a fun situation.
He'll be chair and we'll have, no kidding, cool. No, whatever you guys want to do, again, it's an election.
Hey, can we nominate him if he's not here?
For it. You might want to talk to me about it and I can, you know, you might want to talk to me about it and we can have that discussion, but certainly there's no rule against that. You can nominate someone who's not present.
No.
Oh, I'm walking out before we adjourn.
So, so our public meeting is concluded. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned. Commissioner Scott and Commissioner Exton, I hope you do.